hereby given. Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the District Board of Directors to be held at one zero five Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on August eleventh, twenty twenty one. At the hour of five thirty P M for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the office of the district on August fifth, twenty twenty one, at three P M in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code five five one zero four one five five one zero five zero. Not less than seventy two hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum today in the boardroom. We have myself, Mr. Friedman, and Mr. Baader, joining us through Zoom. We have Mr. Donahue, and I can't see the Jason Starkey. Assistant at this time, we have Dr. Lallon. Let me please have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance and the implication.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all its blessings. Keep us ever mindful of our responsibility to serve our community. Bless us with wisdom and guide us in our decisions so that we may be better stewards. Give us carry so that we can effectively tackle any parts of today's agenda, reveal problem areas, and show us best solutions that will apply. We ask this through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Okay. Moving on to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. Staff, board, Zoom.
I just wanted to mention that. We now have three thousand registrants for our customer portal, Water Smart. That represents forty three percent of all eligible accounts. And that's since July of twenty nineteen when we started the program. So that that shows me that there's a widespread adoption.
Excellent. I think an excellent rate of numbers. We just have to keep, we are goals, do we have a goal, seventy five percent would be a real.
Well, yeah, I don't. Water Smart has told me that we we have, we have very good numbers for for participation. You know, anything over forty percent is considered high rated participation for them. So they said we're one of the better customers.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Zoom members out there?
No.
Let's carry along to item four, consider and discuss for possible approval minutes of the regular meeting from July twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Motion for approval by Mr. Water.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue, or all those in favor? Are opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Five general managers report, Carlos.
Chairman, members of the board. On our residual levels, we still have the same amount of forty percent. As well as we and holding on forty. It's like barely going up first, but it's just around the forty percent. That's a good. Report there and it's not going now. And we're still under the conservation measures. Hope we, September is usually a. Rainy months, so hopefully we'll get some rain coming back up from that side of it. Doesn't work. And the other. Bullet that I have there, city of South Harvey Island had requested a meeting with the board. We, we ourselves went out there last Thursday and met Charles and Robert with the mayor. And I was on the phone, but I was really not feeling too good. And but I did talk to him on the phone. And they really wanna have like a workshop type of meeting. Where we can bring up all the new development that we had, the schedules and and everything for the bond and anything that's going on. With the water district, we bring it up and give them an update. Especially like that line that that we need to install on the on the beach. We're ahead. I believe they're gonna be repairing those streets in October. They want us to move forward and.
When you say a workshop, you mean like Saturday morning workshop? Our regular meeting or?
Five thirty P M, they prefer five thirty and to give them about two, three options for you guys to.
I think anything after Labor Day is workable for myself, and I think pretty much everyone else.
And and they had mentioned that they want it for the end of the month. But whatever the board decides to give, message back to them and. I think it's kind of, we have all the reports ready to, you know, provide the information and.
Can you put that calendar over, please?
Let's look at the some dates or times or whatever.
Uh. I personally, but you're already looking at like the twenty fifth. I mean, if you can get it, next meeting is the twenty fifth.
Right. And actually.
Is this a meeting deal or a workshop?
Workshop.
It's a workshop that they want the board to attend a meeting over there in South Friday. So. That's that's what it is, like an hour workshop on our part, because it's not a whole lot of information that, you know, will linger. A long meeting, and as they start asking a lot of questions, and we have the the information already set up. Where even the copies and then just go over it. Anything else that they mentioned, Charles, Robert?
No, basically.
I think I covered every. There was a meeting with Mayor of Volty and. Just so if you guys can decide sometime this week and let me know, I'll send a message or an email. And see what options we have.
One, yeah, see what you can get, because it's gonna take you, Charles, Robert's gonna take the other engineers, it's gonna take the rest of the board, I mean, it's a.
Yeah, yeah, but basically.
Big situation.
Do all the.
Go set up, get everything done.
Just gonna sit back and, you know, just hear us out, but that's what we normally do here is present all the information to the board. That's what we'll do over there, present to the council.
Sure.
So they just want to present.
Okay.
Whatever it is that they want to discuss, the science, I have no idea.
We have to post an agenda and all.
We have to post an agenda and go through all the motions of the party. Actually, we will be deciding the the meeting.
I'll be there, I can preside, I'll make the date work.
Okay, okay, so that way tomorrow, I'll send an email to you guys, give me whatever three options you have. And I'll give you a couple of options and then tell me if it's okay and add one more option of your side. So. Hopefully, we can get it over and pass all the information and updates to them.
Bill, Jason, any comments?
No, is it, but it's not a regular meeting, it's a special workshop.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't, I don't completely understand what we're doing, but I guess we'll be partying Saturday is the only day we can do this, we can't do this.
So anytime.
Oh, the the is the, they asked for five thirty P M during the week.
So it's just. Okay, I don't know, I don't understand what it's for, I guess. I don't know why they don't come to our board meeting, why we would go have a special workshop for them. That's the part I couldn't hear, and maybe it's because, Carlos, I don't, I don't know how far you are from the microphone.
That one, oh, it's got, yeah, it's on the red. Yes, uh, what they mentioned is at five thirty that we go over there, because I was requesting for them to come over here, because that's what.
He doesn't, I think you have to explain this is in regard, it all started with the water outage and low pressure from the pumps going out a couple of weeks ago.
And that's the way you started, yes.
No, I understand, I understand they had had adversity on the island, as we've experienced, you know, everywhere. I just don't understand why we're gonna have a specific workshop at, you know, at their location. What's preventing them from coming to our open meetings, asking their questions, or even, you know, us hosting a workshop at our facility? Us going over there is the question, I guess.
And and it's a good question, because I did ask them about it, why the they don't come over, that there's a few.
I've never known a board to go to someone else, like ever.
But they were concerned of the the people that they don't wanna cross the bridge this way for some reason.
Because inconvenience to cross the bridge this time of year, I would imagine.
It's a two way street, but let's not get into it.
We'll do it after Labor Day and then they cross the bridge. So.
Yeah, send me an email and I'll give you my opinions.
That's what I need.
Because are we, well, before we finish, I'd like this to be known, I don't wanna open Pandora's box, what's next, we want to Laguna Vista to go to their city council meeting? I mean.
I mean, we we were prepared, we've done that before as as administrators, but.
Yeah, I'm all for you guys, I guess I'm talking about the board, yeah.
Yeah, the board is, is, it's never happened, maybe a couple of board members at one time or another. But I did put a an email that they had sent me in in the packet, and that's what the agenda would kind of read on 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 our, their part.
Okay.
So anyhow, I'll send the email tomorrow. You have any questions, ask me, and then I'll get whatever, provide back the the information to you. And we'll move forward, we'll see what the board thinks. Okay. Thank you very much.
Hey, real quick, I'm here, you guys, sorry for joining late on the Zoom call.
All right.
Yes. Lallon joining on Zoom.
Thank you.
Sounds like this is a good one.
It's a great one. We're going to Los Fresos for a special called workshop next week.
Oh, great, can you guys wanna, you guys wanna come in, get your teeth clean?
There you go. Welcome, Adam.
Okay, let's carry along to, close, Carlos, done. Let's move along to item seven, or item six, Director of Operations Report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have presented the. The report that is normally done on a monthly basis. The service calls and call outs for the month of July did go up by about twenty eight on the distribution side. Most of them were in distribution and electrical and construction maintenance, which affected the areas of water tap and occupant change. And informational as well as check and repair some water leak. On the collection side, they did go up significantly. They won it by sixty calls as far as service calls or call outs. And most of those were on the collection side. Which did affect the. Some of the preventive maintenance. Sorry, the preventive maintenance as well as the sore tap and the dust station. Where mostly went up on. And then the pre-treatment and dust station report did go down by fourteen. Service costs that they made as far as cleaning the. And moving the the wet wells, the the lift station. And they did go up on maintenance, but they also dropped on the preventive maintenance. Does anybody have any question? Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Item seven. Yes. Item seven, District Engineers Report.
So. Alright, so the first item we have is the tax bond funding through Texas Water Development Board for this drinking water state revolving fund. I mentioned it last time in public comments, but it's just more formal here and then just your engineers report. Which basically states that we didn't rank high enough to get on that invitation to apply for funding through that drinking water S R F, which would be that subsidized interest rate.
Really?
So, so basically, our path forward would be proceeding with a open market request. For the full amount rather than just the amount that would have exceeded the twenty four million, which was the guidance from that state revolving plan. Or state kind of use plan that that they published or released their ratings here in July. So that's, that's kind of the first two bullets, basically just, you know, talking about proceeding with that, some of the T C Q. Requesting the the full bond amount and just getting that in their hands already. And so, and then plus with it being open market, that'll help expedite the project to get in the bank. So that's, I mean, that's kind of the the main change regarding our bond applications. So I mean, I don't know if there's any comments on that, or just basically going on the next item. It's a, yes, oh, okay, yeah, so it's just basically the our path forward now for the bond application report. Will be the full amount of the twenty seven million, six hundred twenty thousand to for a T C Q request. And then we proceed and proceed with the open market transaction, just to just to get able to close them to get into banker. So so that's our path forward, or that's what we're recommending, there were some action items, you know, the regular board meeting. And so the the next one would be that grant application for the Port Isabel Water Reclamation Facility, the Title Sixteen. We got a response and we weren't selected for the recommended projects for this this cycle, the fiscal year twenty twenty one. And so there was a debriefing with the pure reclamation scheduled today, but it got rescheduled to August twentieth. Because basically a matter was out there, so. So we don't have much information until that debriefing to know why we can rank high enough to get selected on that project. And so the the last item is the seawater desalination. And that's the one with the Corps of Engineers on that hydraulic hauling study. And they're revising the scope of work based on our T C Q meeting that we had. And really, the the main part of it is adding some, like a different hydraulic software model that T C Q would wanna see, called Cormix. Versus the core would be using a different software entirely. So so basically, that Cormix portion of work would be best performed by a consultant, because the Corps of Engineers doesn't have that type of software, they use something different. So that'll be, you know, part of what we'll have to address as probably an adder to the current study, but that that'll be presented, you know, as far as actual dollars. And then I did also speak to Bond Council on the seawater desalination. And in a future meeting, there's probably something we want to address, if you think you can say perfectly, especially. That for the, for the seawater. Oh, no, that seawater desalination, just the the proposition to the response, so. And that wraps up the engineers.
Thank you, Charles. Item eight, discuss an approval resolution authorizing the district staff and professional advisors to submit an application for the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality in Connection with Issuing Unlimited Tax Fonds for Financial District Improvements. Resolution number one eight seven dash zero eight dash two zero two one.
Right, yeah, that's the resolution requesting the the full twenty seven million, six hundred twenty thousand to be submitted to the bond application.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey, second, thank you by Mr. Baader, or all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, not opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item nine, consider and discuss the possible approval amendment number one for professional services with priests and nickel for Andy Bowie wastewater treatment plant potential copper limit.
All right, now this is for that copper limit that came up as a as a new limit for our permanent renewal landing boy, which water treatment plant. And completed a first study of the water effects ratio, and we needed to actually proceed with a second study. Because the results didn't come out as favorable as we wanted them to. So with this additional study, basically, we get a higher limit to make it less restrictive. So we're recommending increasing their authorization additional, the twelve thousand dollars, five hundred eighty percent.
Comments, questions, motions?
Can you qua, can you quantify not favorable?
Oh, well, it's it's the, because when we were starting off this water effects ratio, we were expecting to. Double our our discharge limitation, which is the concentration that you're allowed to to put into the bay. And we only got a ratio of one point two five versus two. And so that's still very tight for the kind of testing we'll receive when we have to monitor on a weekly basis. And so with some additional testing through bioaquatics, we should still be able to get that ratio of another from like one point five to one point seven versus one point two five. And that'll give us more leeway in our in our limiting, in our discharge, so we don't violate our copper discharge at the end of the week.
Understood, thank you for that clarification, I'll make a motion approve.
Motion made by Starkey, and those are second by Mr. Donahue, or all those in favor?
Aye.
And are, not opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item ten, consider and discuss the possible approval of amendment number two with S W G Engineering LLC. For designs services for waterline upgrading Laguna Boulevard from Maris Alt to the D V three.
Yeah, this is, since that project on Laguna Boulevard got quite a bit larger than what was described in the bond report. This is the additional engineering and surveying to get the full length of that project done. So we're requesting the additional services for ninety six thousand, five hundred dollars.
So we discussed this, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion made by Mr. Water.
Second.
The second by, I can't hear, is that Mr. Donahue?
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Donahue, or all those in favor? They are, not opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item eleven, consider and discuss for possible approval of Paul Corporation proposal for water plant two SCADA PC upgrade.
All right, this this one is for the fact that we've gone to Windows ten and the plant controls, SCADA programming, you know, they're very complicated systems that. You know, keeps our operators informed with all the details on that plant. And it's no longer supported on Windows ten, because it runs on thirty two bit versus sixty four bit. So basically, the cost to get our plant controls upgraded and replaced to the current software is. Is requested for approval, and so because that dollar amount, which I'm looking over to, because I'm on the right page yet. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so so for fifty five thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars, it's to request to upgrade those two SCADA computers, the one in the control room and the one on the floor at water plant two.
Is there any residual software fees that we will, you know, encompass or incur if we take this one?
Um, I don't think there's any. No, it's just the one time install to go to this factory top from our parent.
It's two new computers.
Yes.
When's the last time we've done anything or addressed these systems?
Yeah, so it's.
Is that knowing?
Yeah, it's no, so it was purchased in twenty fourteen, and this is the first upgrade we've had to do on.
I'll make a motion approve.
A second. Approval by Mr. Starkey, second by Mr. Donahue, or all those in favor? They are, not opposed, motion carries, thank you. Well, consider and discuss for possible approval of the proposed tax rate to be published in a notice. The public hearing to be held on August twenty fifth, twenty twenty one at five thirty P M, it's up to court. Adopt the tax rate at the regular meeting following the public. Banner protocol.
The notice that I'm going to advertise, ask for the. The names of board members for and those against, so I'm gonna need a.
A roll call.
Roll call preliminarily, even though it won't be adopted until the next meeting. I have to advertise right after this meeting, advertise for the next. For ten days before we adopt.
Saying a motion for approval and a motion stating for or against a roll call. Favor the tax proposition.
Yes.
So. I'm the guy in the room that didn't completely understand, so this proposed tax rate increase.
Is it an increase?
It is not an increase.
It's a decrease, isn't it?
It it's a three point nine nine cents right now, and it's gonna be reduced to three point eight two cents.
Understood, okay, this is not correlated or affected at all by the bond, but we just approved, right?
That is correct.
There is a correlation or there is not a correlation?
The this does not include anything with the bond, because those bonds have not been issued yet, so.
Understood.
For the coming year.
A motion or just a vote?
It's it's just a. For or against.
Okay.
I'm for it.
So motion to call for the hearing and adoption at the next meeting, is that right?
Make.
Motion made for calling of the adoption hearing made by Mr. Water. And then I need a for or against by each board member. For, for Dave Water, Dave Water is for, Scott Friedman is for.
I'm for.
Dr. Lallon is for.
Dr. Lallon is for, Mr. Donahue is for.
Coach Starkey's for.
Mr. Starkey is in favor, so that includes all board members are in favor. Made by Mr. Dave Water and seconded by.
Me.
Mr. Starkey. Includes that, any opposed, done, motion carries, thank you. Item thirteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of purchase forty five horsepower pump from lift station number twenty two.
Chairman, members of the board, we need to replace a pump pump from lift station twenty two. As we mentioned before, as per T C Q, we need to have two functional pumps in each lift station of the tank. The staff is recommending going with silent water solution for the purchase of the submersible pump for sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty five with sixty seven. Have any questions?
So move.
It's a motion for approval by Mr. Starkey, second by Mr. Donahue, or all those in favor? They are, not opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item fourteen, consider review the expenditure from July sixteen, twenty twenty one to July thirty first, twenty twenty one. You want to have any questions on any particular expenditure, discussing one in particular, otherwise, even acknowledgement from the board for the expenditure. Knowledge by Mr. Water.
Acknowledged.
Acknowledged by Mr. Starkey.
Acknowledged.
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 Knows of all of them. And that takes us to item fifteen, consider remove from the table the following executive session item table at the regular meeting on July twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Deliberation regarding the evaluation of district employee to with general manager.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey, second. Are all those in favor? They are, any opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. That takes item sixteen, insurance committees, right?
Right, go ahead.
Item sixteen, insurance committees report on appeal by Gregory Clement on the award of R F Q number I N S dash zero one dash dash three one dash two one.
Okay, this is, this is the last stage of the appeal by Gregory Clement of the award of the R F Q for windstorm insurance. He was the one who was not awarded. He wasn't. We went with someone else, the R F Q of the service are with. At the first stage of the appeal, he went through the general manager, denied, next, our fellow process, the next stage, the group board. Which he did, he met with the two members of the of the board and the committee, our insurance committee. And tonight, it's this time for the board to. Hear back from the committee and take action on this appeal. He has threatened litigation and his correspondence to us, so I think that puts us under. I would advise before we go into executive session to discuss the matters that that could potentially be part of litigation, so we'll do that, that's that's part of seventeen. But as far as just the basic facts, just to inform the board and the public as to what this appeal is about, what's going on, any salary that's a memorandum of. It's, he'll read that now, and then I would advise going to executive session.
Okay. So. Since twenty seventeen, the Laguna Madre Water District has only had one proposal for windstorm insurance. Considering that insurance is a major cost to the district, we hired our consulting firm, Valley Risk Consulting, to assist us. They advised us that we had to make some changes to the R F Q process to make the process more competitive. The comments we had received in the past from insurance companies were primarily two things. They told us that the insurance markets were blocked, and they told us that they didn't have time to prepare proposals because of the Christmas and New Year's holidays. With a renewal date of January thirty first. So working with those assumptions, we instituted the following changes. To assign insurance markets to a. To assign insurance markets to agents, to advertise several months earlier, and to change the renewal dates for the future. We originally planned on moving the renewal to October first to line up with all of our other insurance policies. But this date is technically still in hurricane season, and we eventually decided on April first renewal. Valley Risk Consulting has many clients with windstorm renewals in hurricane season, including October first. And they did not have a problem with that date. Mr. Clement, our windstorm agent at the time, strongly objected to the October first date. And we eventually accepted his recommendation for renewal out of hurricane season. We advertised with R F P W I twenty dash eleven dash O two. But we only received proposals from the Clement Agency and Montago Insurance. However, both proposals were for the same carrier, ambulance, so the price was the same. I was very disappointed with the results, the agents other than Clement told us that the markets we had assigned them were blocked, and they were unable to get us quotes. Montago got around this fact by not putting a number for the cost on his proposal, but simply writing as presented by ambulance for the total cost. Roger from Valley Risk Consulting suggested we give the board some additional options by initiating an R F Q process. Allowing the board to at least have a choice of agents. We immediately began R F Q I N S dash O one dash thirty one dash twenty one, and we received four responses, including the Clement agents. After completing the evaluation of each agent's qualifications, we chose Montago Insurance to service our windstorm force.
Okay, questions, comments, anything, anyone want to add anything? Okay, I take, item seventeen, executive session permitted by the open meeting, deck B C C A Government Code Section five five one zero zero one. Ed sequence under section five five one zero seven one. Uh item one A, consultation with attorney under section five five one zero seven four personnel matters. Item A, appeal by Gregory Clement on award of R F Q number I N S dash zero one dash three one dash one. Item B, deliberation regarding the evaluation of the district employee to with general manager. I have a motion to go into executive session at uh six oh three P M. Motion in executive session by Mr. Water.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Donahue, are all those in favor? We are in executive session, do we need uh to continue or are we going to take a little recess?
Five minute recess, like to make sure that we disconnect the.
Okay, we'll take a five minute recess at this time, thank you.
Yes, all right, I make a motion to bring it out then, second.
Need a motion to come out of executive session at six uh eighteen P M. Motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Mr. Donahue, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, we are out of executive session. Uh item uh eighteen, consideration and action on executive session items if necessary. Item A, consider an action on appeal by Gregory Clement on the award of R F Q number I N S dash zero one dash three one dash two one.
Do you need a motion, Scott?
Yes, please.
Board member Jason Starkey makes a motion to deny the appeal made by Gregory Clement on the award of R F Q. I N S dash O one dash three one dash two one.
It's a motion for denial by Mr. Starkey, and that's a second by Dr. Laland, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, are there any opposed, none, motion carries, motion denied. Item B, consideration and action regarding the evaluation of the district employee to with general manager. I moved it with table to the next meeting, a motion for table to the August twenty fifth meeting, executive session by Mr. Seconded by Mr. Starkey, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed, none, motion carries, that adjourns this meeting at six twenty P M, like to wish everyone a nice.